All right, good evening, everyone. Mr. Caffey, can you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you. 4.01, public comments. The board, the school board has established a normal item of its order of business. Each regular board meeting, a period for statements as noted in policy BDDH1. During public comments, any citizen of Kirkwood School District may make a statement or address the board concerning issues pertaining to Kirkwood School District at regular board meetings. The period of time set aside for public participation shall not exceed thirty minutes. Any non-board member wishing to speak at a meeting must register their desire to do so in the matter they wish to present with the board clerk before the meeting is called to order. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Speakers are not to address the board concerning specific personnel issues at a meeting. Such issues should be addressed using the district's established procedures for sharing concerns about school personnel and, if necessary, brought to the board's attention in private. Board members will not directly respond to a speaker during the meeting, but if a response is required, the appropriate individual will get in touch in the days following the meeting. The board establishes a uniform time limit of three minutes for each speaker. Although the public has the right to attend regular meetings of the Board of Education, no individual or group has the right to enter into the deliberations of the board. With that being said, I'd like to call Amy Barker for your comment.
Hi, I am Amy Barker. I have been working up at the high school since the late nineteen hundreds now. I like to put it that way. And I'm also here representing Kirkwood NEA. And I just want to say, January is School Board Appreciation Month. And we appreciate you. This is a total volunteer job, and I know it is probably so much bigger than you ever thought it was. And I know you have so many people that you never knew now coming up to you and telling you all kinds of things. And we just really appreciate the service that you are doing for us, for the kids, for the whole community. So, we appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. 4.02, approval of agenda. I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting as presented.
So moved.
Motika.
Second, Caffey.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. I need a motion and a second to approve the presented consent agenda items five point zero-two through five point one-zero.
So moved, Caffey.
Second, Pangborn.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. I now need, moving on to seven point zero-one, the financial statements. I need a motion and a second to approve the December twenty-twenty-four financial statements as presented.
So moved, Pangborn. Second, Motika.
There you go. Good evening. Our revenues in December were thirty-five point eight million, and most of that was current taxes, current property taxes that we received. This, the amount that we received in December was about half of the property taxes that we levy, which is pretty consistent year after year. The rest of the taxes generally come in the month of January. Your operating expenses in December were eight point nine million. Most of it is salaries and benefits, but it did include our annual insurance assessment totaled, which totaled one point eight million. This is an increase, a significant increase of about thirty-three percent over the prior year. This is paid to the Missouri United School Insurance Council Music, which is a cooperative that most districts in Missouri are part of. This assessment covers property insurance, general liability, school board liability, workers' compensation, equipment breakdown, cyber liability, and a treasurer's bond. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor to approve the twenty-twenty-four, excuse me, December twenty-twenty-four financial statements, please raise your right hand and say aye. Or first, are there any questions? I'm sorry. Before we do that, any questions? All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romer. Next up, eight point zero-one, the strategic plan for Kirkwood High School. Come on up. Come on down, yes.
While they're making their way down, if you'll recall, as a board of education, this was supposed to be done earlier this month on January sixth. You're welcome, for everybody who enjoyed those snow days, all four of them. And so, I am bringing that up specifically tonight because you might, you might notice that we have one of Dr. Harold's team, Ms. Owens, is not able to be here this evening because as they were looking for times and dates to move things that got moved earlier this month, the senior night with the parents is going on at the high school this afternoon and this evening. And so, if you, if you, if you see Dr. Harold kind of looking and kind of looking over at the door, I know he would love the opportunity, maybe go catch an opportunity to talk to those families and those parents. But I appreciate his dedication and his commitment to presenting to the Board of Education specifically with regard to the work that the high school is doing as it relates to and is aligns directly to our strategic plan. And so, I'm going to turn it over, I believe, to Dr. Bailey. He'll do a little bit more of a preamble, and then we'll get right on it, some of the great things that the high school has to share.
Thank you very much. Wow. Thank you, sorry. Thank you very much. I'm glad to sit up here with the high school team. This is a terrific team of people that have been very focused on creating an atmosphere of belonging and a place where our students want to be. As you know, all of our schools eventually feed into Kirkwood High School, so it's the place that everybody gets to go. And we see the, the benefits of all the work that everybody below with kindergarten all the way through eighth grade has done, including our pre-K. It's a terrific team of people, terrific team of administrators. There'll be a lot of celebrations that you guys see tonight. But as you know, the, the dates with the changing and everything, the high school never stops. If you ever go, there's always something happening at the high school. And with senior night and with seniors applying for colleges and getting ready to kind of go off onto the, the real world piece, that Ms. Owens is there taking care of that. Dr. Harold will get a chance to introduce his team and jump right into the celebrations and the wonderful data and the information that we have for Kirkwood High School. So I'm happy to turn that over.
Good evening, Dr. Seth Harold, principal at Kirkwood High School. And we'll just go down the line and have each person introduce themselves.
I'm Mike Gavin, I'm the associate principal and sophomore class principal, thank you.
Dr. Shari Yegans, assistant principal with Pioneer Pathways.
Hi, good evening. Ooh, loud. Alex Clark, proud assistant principal for the class of twenty-twenty-eight.
Dr. Courtney J. Forrest, senior even more proud assistant.
We'll go ahead and get started after, as Dr. Owick said, Stephanie Owens obviously would want to be here, but she's at her senior parent meeting tonight. And so, we'll just, we'll fill in her spots without her. We appreciate you guys for providing us with this opportunity to be able to share the great things that are taking place at Kirkwood High School. There'll be a lot of things that we'll cover this evening. We'll go, we'll spend a little bit of time on certain things and maybe less on others. And so, but we, we surely would encourage any questions at the end. Be happy to answer anything that we feel that we need to. With that said, and a lot of the things that we're touching on, there's some great work that's taking place right now at Kirkwood High School. And there's some work that, that we hope to continue to get better. And all the great things that are happening are a direct result of the awesome students we have, the dedicated teachers that we have, and the great support that we get from the district and our families and, and parents and the community as a whole. So, we all know as assistant principals that the work that it takes to lead such a successful high school and one that is, is looked as one of the best in the state of Missouri. And so, with that said, I'll jump right in. If you, if you look up here, one thing that we kind of did some work last year and just really trying to understand what we feel like our core values were at Kirkwood High School. And it just, time and time again, we, we've identified that community, tradition, and excellence were just key words that just consistently kept coming up, especially as it relates to the word "community." Just because I think just the history of a lot of the great things that have taken place in this district, the high expectations for students and families to, to do well academically, and what this high school and this school district has prided itself on of ensuring that, that students are, are prepared for life after high school. And so, we're very blessed to get the students that we get because I feel like the elementary schools and especially our two middle schools do a phenomenal job for preparing students for high school. And then we get the high school, a lot of the work that these guys do, and really all the work that these guys do, ensures that those students are prepared for what's next in life. And so, we, we try to ensure that our decisions are centered around those three things, but then also the vision of the district is just ensuring that every student is engaged, empowered, and ready for success. So, we do not take that lightly. I'm going to jump to the next slide here, and this one just really looking at the instructional practices and, and ensuring that what we're doing in the classroom is student-centered. And so, in, in order to do that, we've got to make sure that we're providing our teachers with the support and resources that they need to teach at their absolutely best each and every day. And so, Dr. Gavin and myself will go through just some bullet points here and touch on a few things. Some of the most important work that, that we're doing, not only at the high school level but around the district is related to our professional learning community. So, Dr. Mike Gavin is going to take over and talk on that.
Good evening. Well, we're going to kind of run through the bullets, but also tell some stories along the way. So, you know, primarily the way we are moving and growing as a staff and examining student needs is through our PLC process. We're obviously happy to report lots of good kind of developments on that front this year. You know, Dr., under Dr. Harold's leadership, we were able to reexamine some uses of our schedules. So our PLC leaders now get dedicated time within the day to kind of help plan, coordinate, and do all the tasks that kind of the PLCs need to do, but so that it's efficient and effective, and we've captured the right data. And so, that's terrific. We've also, he also made an adjustment to our homeroom schedule, which allowed it for embedded collaboration time by departments. And so, I think we have lots of, we've given folks more time to, to do some of the things that has been needed. We've also gotten great support from the district as it relates to that PLC handbook that sort of helped us sort of navigate and clarify some of those things, as well as some of our support with the district's kind of PLC goal overall around SMART goals. So, that's where a lot of that kind of learning has, has gone on. At the building level, what we've tried to talk about over the last year and a half is really how do we take informed action? How do we act on students before it's too late? And the system that we were operating in before looked at a lot of summative assessment data, which was autopsy data. And so, part of what we've been doing over the last eighteen months is sort of making that shift in which we're still kind of ensuring student outcomes, but also looking at what are our measuring points before the big test in order to move. And so, what we heard from our PLC leaders is, you know, they were going to need some help developing formative assessments, which we've done. But another thing that came out as we listened to teachers was when we're working in our PLCs, sometimes we struggle to have common language or ideas to understand how to better meet student needs. And so, through our conversations with our Ed+ consultant as well as Dr. Gronn and Dr. Dickinson, we kind of landed on this Total Participation Strategies book, which is sort of an updated Kagan strategy. And so, what we tried to do with it is really use that as, again, continuing that idea of informed action is, you know, knowing where kids are is half of the battle. The second half is then knowing the right move to make. And so, we're using this as a text to develop some common language and some consistency within PLCs, but also open it up and explore for exploration and experimentation that can be reported back to the group. And, and so, that would be something that's important. Some of the things that have happened slightly outside of that process is, you know, working with Dr. Gronn's office, we had Dr. Hudson come and speak to our staff about AI and the coming technological revolution. That's what kicked off our school year, and that was so important because that was a need that our teachers were clamoring for, and in curriculum we knew that was. And so, he's done a great job in framing that work for us and then also now for the district. We also brought about TurnItIn.com, which is a, a vendor that we're using to kind of run student work through to measure for AI as well as for academic honesty. And that also came about as a result of, of teacher feedback saying, "I need another tool." And we used it as an opportunity also. The teachers that were using this program are the ones that created the training and then rolled it out. And we integrated it so that it was really about a learning experience for kids too around what are the ground rules in this sort of ever-changing world? So, those are things that are really great. We're excited, you know, Elizabeth Locke will be at the high school tomorrow as we kind of continue our path towards a new assessment tool, which is AMP. And again, that is going to give us data that is both demographically broken down in ways that our old tool AMP didn't do, and is also going to be interconnected in some things. So we're really excited about that opportunity. And I think that that kind of feedback loop is also feeding into some of our curriculum work where, you know, right now, as we revise curriculum, we don't have all the data points that we might as to, you know, we say these are the ten big things, how are we doing on those ten big things? And so, we, we think that's going to equip us with some powerful conversations moving forward in, in that realm. And so, I think those are kind of my big, my big points.
Yeah. Dr. Gavin talked on the total participation techniques and how just really looking at some engagement techniques in the classroom and just give our teachers some ideas. If you see on here, we, we have after-school learning sessions. And really, again, one of the things from a high school staff is oftentimes it's so hard to make teachers feel connected to the rest of the campus, especially when you're as spread out as our high school is. And so, this was an opportunity for us to try to provide some structured learning time after school that we can have as many teachers around as possible to where we can, we provide some structure time as it relates to PLC. And so, they've done some PLC work with us around so we can try to help. We've had Ed+ come to one of those to just that way, we, we're giving teachers that time. I know it's outside of a long workday, but give those teachers that time to work on some of that stuff. And a couple of our sessions first semester, one particular one each department, had teachers share out on some total participation techniques that, that they were doing in the classroom. And so, you know, hearing from teachers that are in the classroom doing it, I think other teachers relate well to that. And so, we, we, there comes a point in time when obviously we want to share our message as well because I think that's important to, to provide that vision, but also to, to turn some of it over to teachers. And so, that's been good to be able to do some of that work and try to create that community feel. We've had some giveaways, and we've had some snacks, and just really tried to have some fun working environment in there to just kind of bring us all together. Because oftentimes in high schools, you don't typically have large faculty meetings because it's kind of hard to pull off. And so, we looked at, at those sessions as that opportunity. You'll see the Center for Educational Leadership Professional Development as it relates to admins. Obviously, we go through that work just like the district this year. I, I worked with Dr. Bailey and, and, and doing a targeted feedback cycle with one of our science teachers, and that, that relates to the CEO work. And I find that to be very, very valuable and how I was working with the teacher on some specific things that they were, were looking to grow in the classroom. That was a great learning experience for me and then also for Dr. Bailey to observe my conversation with that teacher and then also give me feedback. And so, I found that to be very valuable. Homeroom, we'll touch on that a little bit, but really looking at, at providing that homeroom structure so that it is centered around student academic support. And so, we, we've had homeroom for many years, and we really kind of run it still the same as far as the time and things of that nature, but we tried to really change the structure of that. We had a tool in Infinite Campus Responsive Scheduling that allowed us to do that. It's something that was already there. And so, we, we visited some, a, a school last spring and did some work on what would this look like to try to really structure our homeroom a little bit better. And so, ultimately, the first thirty minutes, every student reports to their homeroom. The announcements are on, kind of do some agenda items, anything, any kind of housekeeping things get taken place. And then the next thirty minutes is Academic Homeroom Two, and that's where students have the option to select another teacher on our campus to go visit. And then Academic Homeroom Three is the last thirty-minute period where, again, students have to select where they're going around campus. And so, put a little bit of that ownership and accountability and responsibility on our students to manage their time. I, I, I think we feel that it's very, very important as, as much as a high school student's week and day is structured by bells and everything they're doing and where they need to be. We look at this as one opportunity, they have an hour each week where they get choice in where they go. And again, they've had some of that stuff in the past, but the way I feel like we've structured this year is allowed for a little bit more flexibility in what we do. What, what this homeroom structure has also allowed us to do is put our departments on a rotation cycle of collaboration. And so, they got Academic Homeroom Two and Three. You have, for instance, it may be Social Studies and World Language one week. So for that one hour, that's just department collaboration time. Where students cannot come to them, they have that structured time as a department to work on what they feel is necessary. And we try not, as admins, to, to not put anything on teachers there. Obviously, there's some projects we're working on throughout the year, but we really want that time to be to those departments. And that's where it's a little bit challenging on students because if one of their homeroom teachers is World Language or Social Studies, they have to choose, they have to choose somewhere to go. And, and if they don't, they get assigned to randomly, assigned to a, a teacher on their schedule. And so, again, the, just the process, I, I think, has allowed the benefit for our teachers to collaborate as it relates to some of these goals here, but then also put some of that choice back on our students. I have down here, real-world learning experiences, and obviously that's something that we're always striving for at, at the high school level, and our teachers are doing a really good job of that in the classroom because we really want to provide those students with real-world learning experiences. And so, I've just got a couple of images up here, up, up to the top left there. You, you see some science, science students that are working with some microscopes that we've been fortunate enough to get through some, some grant money and the foundation and PPO in years past. And what these do is they tie directly to the students' computers, and the students can see and analyze so much with having these microscopes. And they can see whatever they may be looking at. I'm not a science person, I taught Social Studies. But they can see things moving on their computer screen. And so, but that's just, that's a neat thing to, to see in those classrooms. And I, I always feel like the times that I've been around for that, students are amazed at what's going on there. We have a couple of journalism students there to the right, that's our editors for the call. And there's been a couple opportunities this year. That's one particular article that the three of them wrote that was in the Kirkwood Webster Times. And so, it's just really neat to see students doing that work in high school, but it's also benefiting the community. Last picture I'd highlight on is our AP Lang students there at the bottom. Those students are put together several, they're kind of tasked to work as a group to put together some type of service learning project or something that they're passionate about, so somewhat of a, a passion project. And it, it's been great to see those ideas. This one was for Hair for Hope through organization where they did a fundraiser, and they did all this work on their own. They got some teachers that volunteered, and people could donate money for the teacher that they wanted to get their hair cut off. So it was, as a male, it was either getting it shaved. As a lady, it was getting up to ten inches of their hair cut off. And so, our swim coach, Coach Beasley, was the one that got the most money donated. And so, live on the announcements, one of our students, Chloe, shaved his head on the announcements. And another participant was a teacher that was just really passionate about the work that just volunteered to cut ten inches off her hair. So, I think from a student experience, just being able to touch on, hey, this is something that I did in high school, I think is great. At our February fourteenth Wellness Day for our district, we have a, a panel of high school students that are going to be in two different sessions that are going to be talking about mental health and, and, and mental health awareness and kind of their lived experiences as a high school student. And they're really encouraging our Kirkwood School District staff to come and listen to those students. I had a student reach out to me two weekends ago because she had set up an appointment with a, a police officer at the police department because they're, they're really trying to build more awareness about, around distracted driving. And so, I met them down there and just, I, I told them like, "This is your deal." Like, "I'm not, I'm, I'm just here because you invited me, but you guys need to be doing the work." And they did a great job of where they're the ones that are, that are getting a, a, a crashed car to one of our dance events. And so, it, it's good that this is spearheaded by the students, it stemmed directly from the classroom. There's a, a lot of examples that I can give because we have a lot of teachers doing great things, but for the sake of time, I'm going to move on. Last thing I have on here is just the increase in participation in our Pioneer e-learning courses. You know, obviously, online learning is, is something that really has expanded in, in most recent years. We have a lot of students that really are driven academically and want to look for other opportunities to take courses that may not be available to them, or they just prefer to take a, a online course. We also have students that, that maybe need an online course to kind of get their feedback underneath them, so to speak. And so, we've really tried to look at increasing that. We've been able to do that this year with having some teachers that, that were very interested to teach those courses. They had the, the curriculum and materials ready to go. Obviously, it aligns with our, our in-person courses. And so, we've seen an increase in that participation. It's one of those things that we really value. Our teachers, and we prefer if a student's going to take an online class, we'd love for them to do it with our teachers, so as long as that, as that works for everybody. So that is it for that goal. We'll move on with Dr. Yegans, who's going to be talking about goal two point one.
Good evening. At the high school, obviously, we are, we understand that ensuring that our students feel equitable, our students feel like they're included. So we have practices in place, we have activities and things in place for our students to ensure that, that this is taking place. So a couple of things are outlined here. Personally, I think first of all, students need to understand that they have a voice. I think voice is very important. That's the first part of feeling involved and a part of. So restorative practice, professional development. Administrators went through the professional development, so did our walk-in counselors. Our walk-in counselors, or if you didn't know, the counselors that are in the hallway, and they are kind of like the first line of defense to say, our students have great relationships with our walk-in counselors, so they often know when something may be wrong or when some students may need to talk. So having them trained in that restorative practice was, was a good move because they can then have a informed conversation with those students and then relay that information to administrators. Also, with the restorative practice, it, it provides students an opportunity to speak on their behalf, share their thoughts, and really get their feelings out and feel heard. And when students feel heard, they feel like they belong. The Chaos Ambassadors, Keep Healing and Overcoming Struggles, which is another one that I, I really like. Dr. Candace Cox, the licensed clinical therapist, has been doing a lot of work within the district. And last year, she came in and did a professional development where she trained about ten students under, on, on the Chaos Model. So we call these students our Chaos Ambassadors. What does that mean? Our students were trained to recognize trauma within their peers and to recognize trauma within themselves. So the hope and the goal is, as we continue to work with these students, that again, they are one of the first line of defense, whether in the cafeteria or they're in a classroom, or they are on the bus and they hear a situation or they see a situation. They've been equipped with strategies to help students overcome those struggles, to think outside the box, right? Not to necessarily intervene or break something up, but to be that different voice that students may listen to another student before they listen to a teacher or an administrator. We also have teachers that have been trained as well to recognize trauma within themselves and within their students, so that when they are creating lessons or they're having those hard conversations, that they're able to think back to the training that Dr. Cox gave. On February the twelfth, which is coming up, the students that were trained and the teachers were, that were trained are going to come together because we're in the process of trying to create, now what does this look like as a teamwork? We have a student that's trained and we have an adult that's trained. How can we co-class within a class, so to speak? Put these two together to help identify some issues that we have at the high school? So Dr. Cox will be back in the high school helping us create a process now that we have two different groups trained. Special Olympics is always fun, right? With the equity and inclusion piece, we have Special Olympics come, Special Olympics coming up, February the twentieth. It's going to be a basketball theme with carnival-type games. We will be hosting about a hundred and forty-four athletes across nine school districts. In addition, we have a hundred and twenty student volunteers already signed up. I spoke with Ms. Card earlier today, and she's going to send out an email to do another push. So we're hoping to get that Kirkwood High School volunteer up to at least two hundred students. And that's always a fun, actually, the picture to the right at the bottom is one of those days. BACC, Black Achievement Culture Club is off and running. We are having our Ramona Miller celebration on February thirteenth, so you all invite. You're going to receive a formal invitation as well, but I just thought I'd put that on your calendar right now. BACC sponsors actually created a calendar last year, so we're in the process of implementing that calendar this year. So, we've had guest speakers. Dr. Cox has come in and done a goal-setting activity with students. We are also gearing up for the annual Historically Black College Bus Tour, which we will be leaving Thursday, February thirteenth through the seventeenth. We were going to have some college students come back and speak to the group, but we had a couple of snow days in there, so all the college kids ended up going back to college. So we weren't able to get that taken care of. But another fun thing we do is in March, our sponsors put together entire summer opportunities, summer learning opportunities, so the students will have opportunity to look at summer internships, college courses, jobs, anything that's related, like besides watching TV all summer. So we try to, we try to give them a push. Problem-solving meetings, definitely focus on equity, diversity, and inclusion. My former district, we did have meetings, grade-level meetings, but I will say, these, the grade-level meetings here are awesome. They're consistent, they are each week, each grade level. They're consistent, they are each week, each grade level. The entire team is present, you have a grade-level principal, you have the grade-level counselor, you have myself as the Alternative Education Administrator, you have the SSD Coordinator, you have the school psych, the social worker, and the crisis counselor. And in that meeting, that's an opportunity to discuss all students that we feel are vulnerable at that particular time and identify resources that we need to ensure that they have success. So in reference to our focus on equity, diversity, and inclusion, we are continuing to work. It's an ongoing process and we will continue to create opportunities for our students to feel included. That's it.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next one, Objective 2.2, Ensure and Expand Access to Educational Programs and Opportunities to Intentionally Foster Equitable Readiness for All Students. Starting off, we're just going to talk about on track to graduate. So again, I'm Alex Clark. I am the ninth-grade principal. So, you know, after one semester, 97.8% of our ninth graders are on track. So that means that they have at least three credits. So over 416 students that we have in the ninth-grade class, nine of our students are below that three-credit mark. So, you know, Dr. Yegans just mentioned how we use these problem-solving meetings to help, to help, you know, problem solve, to, you know, figure out some some different ways that we can get our students back on track. So I'm fortunate to be on this team, to be able to to work with our counselors, to work with our social workers, other administrators. But I'm also fortunate that we had some amazing eighth-grade transition teams. So when I first got hired, I was hired in in March of 2024. And I was able to come on campus a few different days, just to kind of get my feet wet, just to kind of learn some systems. And we were invited by Dr. Haver at Nifer to come to the middle school to eat lunch with them. So Dr. Harold and I went and ate lunch with the eighth graders, just to kind of get to know them, just to kind of build that process of this is what high school is. This is who you're going to see for the next four years. And it was an amazing experience. You know, the next time that I came, we had a ninth-grade transition meeting. This is with counselors, with with social workers, with administrators from both the high school and the middle school. And here, we were able to talk about some students that needed some extra support, some interventions that we're providing the middle school, some students to kind of look out for, to to really, you know, welcome them into that high school experience. And I think these these meetings, these transitions have been very helpful. So I'm extremely happy with this 98%, you know, mark that we're at after one semester. But I'm also very happy with and very excited about just the sense of belonging that our students have. With the ninth-grade class, we have over 200 students that have been part of athletics. We have 20, 21% of our students who are involved in some kind of music program at the school. We have students who are taking over 360 honors classes. So these are all things that that we are extremely happy with, especially that that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, that they're they're really pushing themselves and they're finding that sense of belonging. So with that, I'm going to transition over to Dr. Gavin, so we can talk about the sophomores.
Yeah. For the class of 2027, I think 401 of our 408 students are meet that criteria of being on track for graduation at the time that we pulled that in. I don't remember if that was six or nine credits, but it it it's it's the lowest percentage I've ever had at this stage. And of those eight students, I'd like to just sort of describe kind of who they, who those friends are. So one of those students is a homeschooled child who comes to us for electives, and so that really doesn't even count, but it does count. And then I would say the other seven, all of whom, you know, are getting supports in pathways, some of whom are in co-curriculars, half of whom did not originate from a Kirkwood school, some of whom are getting ALL support, some of whom are getting reading support, some of whom are like in a intensive half-day program in in our discovery setting, some in innovation, and some actually in the regular setting and will probably be be caught back up at the end of this term. So it it is a very good place to be. And again, like we've mentioned, the class is fortunate for both those online offerings that have helped students, for our summer offerings, as well as the offerings they've received from the middle school to arrive to us. You know, many, many, many of whom with one or one and a half or two credits.
Thank you. It's Dr. Ford again. With regards to the class of 2026, just want to highlight a few things as well. The latest data showed a GPA of 3.39. On average, 14 of our students currently enrolled or not on track. That leaves us at a 96.6 graduation rate as of right now. Similar, a lot similar to Dr. Gavin. Some students are homeschool students only, so their credits, they're not fully enrolled, so their credit counts are low. We also take into account some of the students who did not start with us. And we can see a difference in that, students who transferred in. And if some are different reasons, I'm thinking of two off the top of my head, one from California and one from Illinois, who have different graduation requirements. So these particular students didn't fill any classes in those in their home states. They just aren't where Missouri needs them to be. So those are two students that we can, you know, easily account for. And other students who are, we are providing additional assistance along the way. The biggest thing is that there's a plan moving forward. We know who these students are, we can easily identify them, we can name them. And the work of ensuring that they graduate, walk across the stage in 2026 has already begun. So that's a a big plus, I believe. Just a few other things. Dr. Harold spoke on some of the stuff that just as a great level administrator, seeing students come in and being able to watch them grow. It's just, you do it over and over again if you, you know, if you're an administrator for a period of time. But being able to see students come in as freshmen and now speaking to the experiences in the AP Lang classes, conducting the extensive interviews, contacting government officials, fire department, police department, doing doing surveys on school funding, equitable spending, drunk driving, and just a number of very, very important and serious topics. And I had the honor, if you will, of just kind of sitting back and seeing it all. Because having one conversation with one student, but then getting a video from another student. And I had the privilege of watching all of them, I believe they all sent them to me. But just knowing that they're 17, 16, 17 years old, really providing solutions to real-world problems. And what they don't know is that they're, not the problems, but the problems that they are attacking, if you will, they all go together, right? So one student is just doing this project, one student is just doing this project. But I've had some conversations, like, hey, did you know that this student was over there doing this? And how that relates to your project? And what if you got that person in touch with this person who you had an email with? And so it started some more conversation. And it's just, I was in one class and it's just, you know, what, think about in five or 10 years, what you all will be doing and what you all will have the opportunity and the expertise to do as you are just juniors in high school at this time. Another point I want to make is some students were really moved to help support transition. And so Mr. Clark talked about the the eighth-grade transition experience. Some students chose to develop, I don't want to say develop a course or whatever, but they visited Nifer and North Middle Schools to speak with eighth-grade students, to talk about their high school experience and what they did, what they did not do, and what they recommend. So that that's another way that we are working to enhance that transition experience. Just recently, this past Thursday, we've got another group of students who have a speaker series going on, which is focused on career exploration. So they've brought in an architect, they've brought in someone who's working with in the St. Louis Blues organization. The Kirkwood Fire Chief was in, and we've got at least two more professionals coming in. But all of these things are things that can be continued. They don't just have to end when the class ends. So these are things I'm trying to get the students to do to implement in a manner that it becomes programmatic, that in their absence, this is the legacy that they leave. And that's one of the biggest things. I don't think that they planned to do this when they set out to to have these projects, but these are things that are coming from it. And so all of these things are things that can continue to go on. And I'm just super proud, once again, super proud principal of the class of 2026. A few other things that we want to highlight. Oh, I'm sorry. She's not here. I was going to go.
Dr. Ford told everybody he was only going to say about two or three things. No, I'm just messing with him. I appreciate you all giving that rundown. I'll just briefly touch on our seniors for for Dr. or Ms. Owens. We currently have 13 students right now that we just need to do a little bit more work before May rolls around. And so, you know, obviously, when they get to this point, this is like the, you know, this is kind of really crunch time of getting these students on track. And so a lot of things are in place. I know Dr. Owens or Ms. Owens, I was able to have conversations. She's always filling us in as we meet on Monday mornings, just talk about the progress of these students and what's in place. Dr. Yegans has served as a huge help with with finding alternative options and pathways for these students just to ensure that they get that high school diploma, because we know how important that is. It's also a busy, very busy time for seniors. As you know, Ms. Owens is at the parent meeting tonight. But at this point, like, it's really for for students that that are college-bound, like, this is such an important time of the year. And I know most recently, we've had a student that was accepted and plans to attend Stanford University and then also Duke University. And so those don't come very often. Met a, talked to a parent last weekend whose daughter is at Iowa State, that's playing an instrument up there and and one of their bands. And just what a great opportunity that they have, and that's a credit to what's going on here. He also mentioned we have another student at Iowa State, which I know who that is. And and both of these two are Kirkwood High School graduates that have classes together, but they don't hardly interact because they're both so quiet. But it's just interesting that, you know, we have students elsewhere. There was a student that came back and visited us from UCLA that finished her first semester at UCLA. And so this high school historically has always put students on a path to be successful. But at the same time, we still have students that just need a little bit of our support to get where they want. And and I know with the Success Ready Student Network and really exploring other opportunities to connect our students with with post-secondary education and/or a career field is is very, very important to us. And so I appreciate the work Ms. Owens is doing with with the senior class.
All right. So looking at a few other things before us, if you take a look at that first picture, the top picture, it represents an award being presented to a group of students in our St. Louis CAPS program. All of those students aren't Kirkwood students, only three of them are. But they were part of a team of students that were joined by Limburg, Abton, Bayless, Oakville segment. And I believe I got all the schools correctly. But they were the winners of the Eighth Annual Gateway Arch National Park Engineering Contest. And they were tasked with building a bridge from the past to the future. So they had, they were given a task, they had to compete. And in their process, they had to utilize their skills and strategies to come up with a solution to the given problem. We were proud, we are proud that several of our students who are Kirkwood students were a part of that winning team. What this also represents is that we don't, we know that the learning doesn't stop within our hallways. And as much as we have to offer dual-credit AP and all these other great things, there's only so much we can do. So we we love our partnerships with South Tech, we love our partnerships with our early college programming, we love our partnerships with STL CAPS, and those are just to name a few. And the other picture below represents, those students represent the National Merit Scholar. Students, they are given that opportunity, students are given that opportunity by us, by way of us offering the PSAT. And those scores are used to help qualify students for that. And ultimately, what that means is greater opportunities for larger amounts of scholarship money and cha-ching, right? So everybody likes that part. So once again, just highlighting the fact that we are always seeking to expand our options to expose our children to what's beyond our high school. And another thing that we have done so far this year is increased our course offerings and our dual-credit. Once again, I spoke about AP. AP isn't for everybody, and that's one thing that we know. There are students that are on that track that want to challenge themselves in that manner. But there are also students who say, I also want to go to college and I also want to kind of start there early, but I want to stay here in the high school and do it. And it's a great opportunity to continue to have students within our building and to not have them go outside or go to the dual-credit option and take those courses. We've so far this year from last year, expanded our AP offerings by 26. So that allows a greater amount of students to have access to our course offerings. And what that also means is that we have our staff, more staff, that are identified as qualified to teach these classes and these courses by various mainly in-state institutions. Go ahead.
In terms of library, we're always trying to increase the number of students who attend the library. So I met with the librarians recently, and they had a lot of great things that they wanted to talk about. One is just a lot of new spaces. So within the classroom area, we have new flex seating areas, which allows students to kind of sit wherever they want. We have bicycle, stationary bicycles there that allows the students to read and, you know, exercise while they're doing it. It's a great place for students to go, but also staff loves it as well. The Make Your Space area is still seeking donations, but they are doing amazing. They're loving that area. And then recently, we started expanding the peer tutoring during homeroom. So normally, this peer tutoring was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays after school, but now they're doing it during homeroom as well. So that way, we're giving our A-plus students opportunities to tutor some of our other students. And then-
Let me chime in, just to give you a little more detail about that. So Dr. Harold spoke about the collaboration of the teachers during the certain weeks. And so what our librarians did in putting their heads together along with administration staff. So like, if science is in collaboration that week, then the peer tutoring is focused on science. So students that are strong in science, whereas I might lose out because those science teachers are not available. So students that are strong in science can go to the library, serve as tutors, and students still get the opportunity to work on science. And that changes by collaboration. So it's 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 very coordinated efforts to ensure that teachers get the time that they need, but students still get this, the resources and services they need as well. And it gives students opportunities for A-plus hours as well. So it's a, it's a win-win.
And then finally, so our ninth-grade counselor is amazing, Mrs. Kennedy. She is piloting a program this year, just in terms of course selection. So she's going to, starting next week, for the next two weeks, meet with every single ninth-grade student as as they're picking out their classes for second, for their sophomore year. So students have already created their schedule, but now in terms of finalizing it, she's going to sit there in every English class and meet with every single student. So that way, she can place a face to the name. And it's just another opportunity to build relationships. So that'll be piloted this year.
I will bring us home just talking about our our focus of continuing to foster a climate of belonging for our students and our staff. And hopefully, this is where some of the fun comes into play at Kirkwood High School. You know, obviously, it it's really, really important. And we talk about just ensuring that each person that comes in that building each and every day is is happy to be there, is excited to be there, and feels like they belong. And so that's important. And so I'll just kind of run through some things. Obviously, we have a couple Wellness Days that that we do throughout the course of the year and we do at the district level as well that just gives staff an opportunity to do some things. We did this back in August, we just tried to create an opportunity where staff were completing a task together and they were matched with other teachers that they're not normally working with. And so just again, try to build the connection amongst our teachers and and that sense of community of just having them kind of check away from, I know as much as as people want to be in their classrooms getting ready for a school year, it's also important to kind of check away and just do some fun things with your colleagues. You know, just a couple of other things. I I mentioned the homeroom changes that, you know, again, the biggest thing for that, we felt like early on, you know, just we needed the capability to be able to randomly assign students. Early on, we were not able to do that just with the student, a teacher on a student's schedule. So they got randomly assigned to any teacher on campus. To a certain extent, I always felt like that truly trust our teachers that at any point in time, they could welcome a student into their classroom, whether they know them or not, and make that student feel like that they belong in that classroom setting. And so I personally witnessed some great things with that now that it selects students that are currently on their schedule. But what this has done is just created some really neat opportunities. If you go around in those homerooms of the connections that that some of those students build. And talking with a math teacher, there's a group that chooses him, and some of the the students don't even have him for math, but some of their peers do, but they will come there to his room to work on math. And so again, I think that that's that's kind of a good climate that we can establish, that students want to be in a teacher's classroom, they're able to- that students want to be in a teacher's classroom. They're able to go with their friends. And again, I talk about that hour during their week where they have choice and where they're going. So, as long as they can manage that the right way, I see that being a huge benefit to our students. Dr. Ford touched on some of the students that have arranged for guest speakers to come in. If students want to go to the journalism lecture hall and see those guest speakers, they just make that selection in responsive scheduling, and then that's where they go. I think this has opened us up to be a little bit more structured in some of our club meetings. So, we've had some of our club meetings take place here. We've had some other things take place during homeroom. I know that student panel that is meeting or is being a part of the Wellness Day on the fourteenth, they were able to meet during that thirty-minute homeroom. So, again, it provides a little bit more structure, and it allows us to do some of those things during the school day instead of trying to build that in before or after school. And obviously, when you have a lot of clubs, you can't do all of them every single week. But it has been beneficial to some of our teachers and sponsors to be able to touch base with those students in that homeroom. And so, I think that's been a huge benefit. You know, we had our new student social this September, which we did for the second year, which any student that's new to Kirkwood High School and to the district. So, they're new to us. They didn't come from the middle school. We bring those students in and kind of treat them to some donuts, muffins, things of that nature, and try to do some engaging activities with them, give them a class T-shirt, and try to make them feel welcome. We'll try to circle back around with that this time of year. Well, now, the grade levels will just touch base with their individual students. So, make it a little bit more personalized just with them instead of a bigger event. You know, there's a picture up there to the left of our Hispanic Heritage Celebration, which I think that's the second year that we've done that. That's pretty much hosted by our students. It's a great activity there. On the bottom, you see some, one of our teachers and students that's dancing in the commons. Again, this took place during homeroom. Saw one of our ELL students that is a very quiet young lady, and she had, you know, several of our teachers and students dancing in the commons. And I thought that was just so good to see, and you could tell from the smile on her face that she liked that. And so, you know, again, just trying to create opportunities to get our students around each other outside the learning environment, so to speak. And it's important to try to have some of these events. If you see that there in the bottom right, it was such a neat opportunity. It's the first time for me to see it as far as us having to go play at Webster Groves on Thanksgiving and how we have to get the bell over there and get the bell back. And so, this is a picture of the students that were so, like, interested in doing that. And as cold as it was, you know, you can see them. That's after they brought the bell back home, I think, for the twelfth year in a row. We also had a new parent social this year. First, we'll acknowledge that our PPO does a phenomenal job. They are a huge support on our campus. They are great for our students. They are great for our teachers. And they really are responsive to anything we need. And so, they've helped out with the new student social. I worked with them to create this new parent social that we did on August first this last year, just because some of the feedback they get is if you're a new parent or family to Kirkwood High School, it's just still trying to feel connected and learn about what the high school has to offer. So, we had an event where we had some parents and students, part of some clubs and activities, come in and hang out in our cafeteria. Then we just did, I did a little presentation. Mr. Clark, as well as the freshman principal, did just a presentation to some of these people and provided some information, then kind of let them mingle with others. And so, that's the first time we did that. But the whole purpose is to bring these people on our campus before school starts, to hopefully make them feel like they're a little bit more familiar with the place and the people. Also, freshman day this year, it's something that we've done every single year. We were fortunate enough this year, just based on how the calendar fell, that we were able to structure that freshman day with all of our other current teachers on campus. And so, that was, that was great, because we had the students going around their schedule, and we put them on, you know, like announcements or bells. So, they would go to their first period class, and the actual teacher was in that classroom. And the only ones that were in there were just the freshman students. So, they would go to that class for a few minutes, at least lay eyes on the classroom and the teacher. Then we had the next class period, and they went to their next spot. And I thought that was just a huge benefit, not only for our teachers to see the students that they're going to, you know, the new freshman students they have, but also for our students just to get a feel for that. I think that ultimately helps that Tuesday morning run a little bit smoother when you at least have been in that classroom and you've seen the teacher. You know a familiar face on that hectic day. So, I found that to be, you know, a huge benefit. One of the things that we've done for the last two years have had a school culture leadership team that we've kind of put together, that we meet once a month, just for about thirty-five minutes after school in the library. This is voluntary. It's just whoever wants to show up. If you can't show up this time, show up next time. If you don't, you don't. Send feedback, email it in, whatever. And this has just been a very, very informal opportunity for teachers, and staff for that matter, to just sit and discuss things. So, one of the things we did is we looked at our climate survey results from our students. We looked at our climate survey results in two particular categories from our teachers, and really just kind of talked through some of that stuff and talked through, what does the belonging look like, not only in the classroom, but on this campus? What are some things we need to do differently? And some of that feedback has surely helped with some of the things we do. I know we talked a lot about the tradition of welcoming our freshmen on the first day and how for some, that could be a little bit overwhelming. And so, we kind of structured it that it was, that we gave some opportunities for students to come in other doors, but still feel like they're welcomed. And some of that work stemmed from this group. And so, their feedback has been great. And just providing that outlet that if staff wanted to come and just discuss things, it's been, it's been a huge benefit. Just a couple other things that we do throughout the year, like, we like to treat our custodians with an annual dinner. We do that with our support staff as well, just a way to show them that we appreciate those individuals. And just a couple other things that, you know, we try to do throughout the years is find just ways to connect with people and kind of reach out and show how much we appreciate them and everything they do for our students and our school. Another thing that I'll point on, I don't know how well you can see this, but this, this is a positive shout-out that our teachers have been doing this year. And Amanda McKay was one of our building mentors, is really the one that did a lot of legwork with this last year and kind of piloting her department and then rolling it out through our entire campus. And so, I just kind of wanted to put this as an example. There's several of these where basically a teacher will give a shout-out to a student, whether that be a math class, English class. In this case, it's a science class, and just really bragging on that student. And for us administrators, we kind of see those, because they come back to the grade-level principal and/or myself. But just to see that the parents are like, "Thank you for recognizing my student. We're so proud of her too. We're glad you guys see her strengths as well. We're very grateful what you do as a teacher there." And so, it just, it's a huge value to that student, their families, and then also that teacher that's acknowledged them as well. So, that's just been a huge positive, just to see those emails come through every so often where one of our students is being celebrated. And I would say the majority of the time, they're celebrated for something they didn't even realize they did. And so, to see that pat on the back when they, you know, they're just kind of doing what they, they feel they're expected, and then, and that gets noticed, I think that's even more meaningful, that their hard work. A lot of it's about leadership, a great contribution in class and our class discussion, way to be a leader, way to go help your classmate. The other day, when a student was struggling with math, this student come over and helped him. And they probably just think, "Hey, that's just what I do, because that's my classmate." But to be celebrated with that is just awesome. And so, that's just kind of a brief rundown of some of the things we do as it relates to wellness and belonging. And overall, I think we kind of touched on the things that we felt is important. Inevitably, we left probably some things out, but we're more than happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. I'll turn it over to Dr. Bailey.
Do want to go back, if you can go back two slides, just because I was a high school principal too, and I always like to just kind of, the club one. There, one more. There you go. Just because when we talk about finding your people and finding the folks that you connect with at the high school especially, there are fifty-four different clubs, and you can see that there are different things that students have access to, all the different sports. We're not even talking about some of the club sports or some of the other additional things that have been added. Just in its second full year, our esports, for example, already has kids placing at the state level and doing all kinds of competitions through that as well. And the other thing that I just want to point out is as you went down and heard each principal talk about their grade level, you heard them give you a, "We know who those seven kids are. We know who those six kids. We know who those thirteen kids are." And there's a plan attached to each one of those. And so, this team reviews their data constantly. They get alerts through systems that we've set up, that you guys have seen through early warning pieces. And really, the high school has to contend with some things that not other, our other buildings don't, because our courses have to be NCAA-approved. They have to be okay for the college level. We have to have appropriate certifications. We have to make sure kids are on track for graduation. And occasionally, it hasn't happened in a while, but those requirements change. It wasn't that long ago that there was an additional CPR requirement, for example, or other things that get tacked on at the high school level. So, the high school, like I said, is always hopping. There is always something going on that's up there. And the students have great opportunities to find who they fit best with. And probably the best example that I can just think of of how kids just find their group of students is go to the high school at lunch. And you, you will not see kids sitting at a table. They just find everywhere else to go. But they find their group of students, and they find who they want to hang out with, and they make those connections for their lunch groups that they sit around. But we've got a team of counselors, a team of administrators, social emotional supports at the high school. Really, the board has been very supportive of the resources that we've put there, and you can see some of those results. So, again, just very proud of the high school team. You can see the intentional efforts on belonging, intentional efforts on connecting. And again, there's eighteen hundred kids. And so, it's hard to have everybody feel that connection altogether, but you can see the intentional efforts that are there. And so, we're happy to take any questions that the board has. I'll mostly aim in this direction down the table.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm going to start to my right. Ms. Pingborn.
Well, that was so much, I don't know if this is working. That was so much fun to listen to and see the enthusiasm from all of you. It just, it helps me, even if I knew it, to like really see the love that we have for our students. So, I just want to say thank you to all of you. And I did want to add a couple things. So, no questions, but I want to acknowledge that our teachers go above and beyond so much of what you even talked about today. We have teachers who are emailing parents when they've seen, you know, a small win in the classroom or, you know, that your student said this today, or just things that are above, you know, just their grade. And they don't have to do that. And our teachers are doing this, and I've heard from so many parents that this happens. And I think that that's something that needs to be acknowledged, because our students see that when parents have the opportunity to share that they got that, and they see that kindness, and those small acts of kindness, I think, go far away. And then, the second thing is, and you said, you know, be up there at lunchtime, but going up to the high school at different times of day and seeing counselors, the front office staff, custodians, the SROs, the security, the nurses, and so many others connecting with students. I mean, it just, it like, like, you know, fluctuates through the school in so many ways. So, I just wanted to say, like, I don't, on top of all the great stuff that you shared for the last hour, those are two things that I have seen or heard from people that I wanted to acknowledge. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hepburn.
Yeah, I couldn't possibly comment on every wonderful thing that we heard about today. It was, it was so beneficial. I think one of the things I just want to connect for our community, because I think sometimes it can get lost on some people, but the efforts that you guys do, all these programs and initiatives, and the autonomy that you're empowering our students with, with their schedules, the way you're allowing teachers to do more for themselves and to learn, all these different things, SEL, just everything. I mean, again, I could not list them all. But that connects to academics. And I think that not everybody always immediately puts those things together. But when we go down the line and you guys talk about, you know, those, that small percentage of kids that aren't on track for graduation, and the fact that, you know, as Dr. Harold, Dr. Bailey was, you know, were saying about that we have plans for these people. I mean, it's just really, really important that people understand that all of this stuff is related, that everything we're doing for these students is connected to their success at school and in life. And so, I just really, really appreciate that from, from your entire team. So, thank you. My one and only question was, we touched on the transition plans for going from the middle school to the high school, and I think that's fantastic. Something that has come up to me a number of times are some of the struggles that kids have maybe coming from like a St. Peters or a out-of-district-type scenario. I didn't know, do we have any programs in place for those kinds of things? Is it just the new student social, or do we mirror any of those transition plans for those kids that don't come from those two middle schools? I don't know who answers. I just-
Yeah, but I will say, because this is my opportunity to, when Mr. Clark was mentioning about the transition, I got to give it out, a shout-out to Dr. Liberton, because I don't want to make her mad. We didn't leave her out, because we also, she led us, we came over and did a, like, basically brought all the eighth graders into, into her gym. Ms. Kennedy and I, Mr. Clark could not make it for this one, but this was last spring, and we brought some current seniors at the time over, and kind of talked about high school and that experience, and then allowed students to ask questions to the seniors that we had over there. As it relates to students that may come from a school outside the district, that's why we tried to kind of put together that new student social. And again, that's not enough. That's just one piece. We do have the shadowing opportunities. Those students will come and shadow our current schedule, and then, and we typically get that throughout the course year. I had the numbers on me, and I can't figure out where we are this year with that. But I have the numbers from the last three years of what that looks like. And right now, we're on track to have more than we've had the last two years as far as students that are coming and taking advantage of that. I think it's like sixty-one to this point, sixty-one students. And oftentimes, that's going to be a knife for a North Kirkwood student that does that. But we will get some for St. Gerard and St. Peter that will come do that as well. And so, that is definitely something that's on our radar, is how do we connect with those students? We had roughly nine this year that came in to us from our private school. And so, trying, nine, yeah, yes. And so, trying to connect, that, that, that we know of that really kind of came in at the start of the school year. Yeah. And so, that's definitely a focus of ensuring that those students feel welcome in that, in their homeroom with their teacher, that some of those connections are starting to take place.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much. And hearing that it's nine students, I think that's just much lower than it was back in my day, probably, because I was shocked, you know, some of, some of my friends, I had been asking them recently, and they were like, "Oh, it was, it was a really hard, hard transition to come in where everyone knew each other." But I know we're doing some things, and I appreciate you identifying that opportunity.
Well, and we do, you know, have a list that's really for technology and a variety of other things. But we're monitoring a list of who's coming in over the summer. And so, we do, like, when we meet with our counselors over, like, who is this kid going to eat with at lunch? Who's the classroom teacher, you know? And so, you know, and doing some research from parents on trying to make a few connections so that that big place seems a little less big on that day. In addition to doing that, we do try to put in place, and do just have to spend some more time with families to help them kind of us understand each other as we kind of move forward.
That's amazing. I think that's probably so much more than we used to do. So, I, that's so good to hear. Thank you.
Ms. Motika.
Well, thank you. This, I'm, I'm always blown away by these nights. I love what you're doing. I wish I could go back to high school again, kind of, maybe. But one of the things that really stuck out for me that is great is you said you have eighteen hundred kids. And if I did the math correctly, which is always a question, over the four grades, there are fewer than forty who aren't on track to graduate. That's amazing. And you've only got maybe ten seniors who aren't there. So, all these kids are getting caught before they really fall. And I want to thank you for that, for all the processes you have in place for that. And one of the things, I think, Dr. Gavin, you use this phrase at the beginning, of informed action. And it sounds like everything you're doing centers around that. And our kids are benefiting, our families are benefiting, and it helps our teachers too. So, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews.
Thank you again for all your work. I do have a few questions. One, with regards to the chaos training, I know that you're bringing the teachers and the students together, but is there a plan to make sure that we're training more students before? Or are you going to build, you know, kind of build a plan for that, just so we can?
Microphone.
Yes, we have a plan, but first, we would like to solidify what we have and create a process and follow that process, and then move forward, providing more students and teachers to take part. And we may even be to the point where we can train the trainer.
Oh, that's exciting. That's really great to hear. And then, one other question was, can you speak a little bit about this turn-in? Yeah, turn it in.
So, TurnItIn.com is a, is a program that's used at many instances of higher learning, and it's also used at some area high schools. And what it does is, it is a means that student work is submitted through that, and it runs it against a number of things. So, it'll run it against every known published item. It also runs it against a running record of everything that's been turned in by our school and neighboring schools. And so, depending upon, like, obviously, privacy, but it'll, it'll show then for the student before they submit it, it sort of highlights, here's your percentage of overlap, and here is where that overlap occurs. And as the teachers have talked about, like, whether it's in quotations or citing sources, there are times and places for that to exist, and then there are times and places for it to not. And so, it's a process that happens, it's just another part of the writing process, and it's another point of information. And it's a conversation starter if we get into an ichyra moment, which I'm sure Judy could probably attest to of how hard that kind of can be when you find a spot with a student where you're not quite sure.
Right.
And then, the other piece, which is imperfect, and we're working with Dr. Gona and sort of evaluating, because this is our first year piloting this program, is, you know, it, it has an AI detector- it, it has an AI detector, which is imperfect. I mean, we'll be honest, that there are parts of it that we like and parts of it that we like less. But we also feel, and we're gonna kind of see what else is in the market, but, you know, we want to try to equip both our kids and our teachers with a tool that helps them learn and understand, as well as to kind of start a conversation, like.
Okay. And so then, also, just with regards to that, then you all, are you're also training the kids in, in this, right?
Yeah, and that was what was super critical, was when we created, when we, when we went out and went to market and looked, and then we landed on that, you know, it was really critical that we had English and social studies teachers who were the most intensive users be a part of it. And then they actually created the training for teachers, and like, the only thing that kind of Dr. Grona and I said was, like, we need to have an experience. And they, they, they wanted that automatically, that where it was instructional kind of piece for kids, as well as kind of a component for staff. And so I think that those are all good things.
Yeah. I would just say, you know, you're, as I hear your work, it's so comprehensive. It's so, I'm looking at your work that you're saying about your curriculum, about your assessment, about, then I look at the homeroom piece that you've added in, and how dynamic that is, that it's meeting the needs of both your students and your teachers. Thank you. Because this, that kind of work is a lot. And so thank you for being dynamic leaders that are, are leading our, our school district and impacting our kids. So I, the other thing that I really love is just that whole recognizing students, that piece that you have made it so that, that it's easy to recognize, recognize students and share it with their parents. These are all great things. So I know the work is hard, so thank you, but keep up the good work.
I just want to add two things real quick. One, AI at the high school is especially interesting, because we have some departments that are like, "Yes, yes, yes, please show us all the tools we can do with this," and others that are like, "Whoa, we want original work." And so the high school in particular has got a lot of continued work that comes around that. And then it is literally changing daily when those things come through. And then to your point about the chaos piece, just as a bit for the board as well, the, the entire district on our day before Snowmageddon happened, on our professional development day, got some version of that from Dr. Cox as well. So we did have the entire district, including support staff and others, come and receive that training pre-K through twelve as well. So the students were kind of our first group that we had a couple of years ago. We brought Dr. Cox in to talk with some students and expanded from that work. And Dr. Jaggins has done a terrific job with that group of students as well. Kind of a peer mentor sort of approach, but it's a, it's a terrific group of students. And I'll also add, as it relates to AI, that's also a hot topic with students. And so when it comes to essay writing with our English teachers, they do such a great job of guiding our students, but letting our students choose what they want to write their essay, especially like our argumentative essay they're doing right now. And in talking to an English teacher the other day, she's got several students that are writing on AI. And so with part of that process, you know, they have to have so many supporting details and reliable sources, and so they have to do that research on their own. And so what's interesting is now the students are going to be doing the research on, on this hot topic in education and AI. And so, you know, when it's all said and done, some of those students are going to have a lot more knowledge than, than maybe even some of us educators, because they're really diving deep into it. At the same time, I saw this, Janet Mees Reinhardt, our librarian, you know, had this English class in there and teaching them about just proper ways to research and what that looks like. And so it was just good to see her help supporting the teachers and covering all that work so that our students are better prepared when they do that research.
Kathy?
No, just two quick things. As a senior parent who was not able to go to the senior meeting tonight, just, just thank you.
I knew that was coming.
Yeah. No, Dr. Bailey, you kind of stole my point, and I'll just restate it, because I think it's incredibly important. But Kirkwood's a big district, we have a lot of resources, but it's great to see, you know, our ability to kind of live at the student level. And the way you guys spoke directly to those, you know, statistics around graduation and stuff, you really understand the student population. So I thank you for that. That really did come across in the presentation tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boyko?
Yeah, just real quick, as someone who sees it, like a lot of us do, appreciate that the school is alive, and it's alive with intentionality and a student-focused one of that. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. And yeah, I echo what everyone has said. I think it's great that you guys have taken the initiative to just be innovative, not only for our students, but our staff, to help like improve instructional practices. The college tour, I think it's important to note, like, the collaboration that you guys are doing with other school districts, so it's not just within our district, but you have like the three other school, uh, two other districts. Want to name them?
Wester, Grand High School, and University.
Yeah. So I just think that, yeah. I just think, no, it's really cool. I won, I walked into my counselor's office and saw them all on the call, so it's really intentional, and I just think that's also is what education is about, right? Like, us not-
And getting my kids from different areas together. Yeah.
Yes.
It is, it's really nice to see kids from, from multiple school districts get together for one common goal. And when we all get on the bus, the first thing we say is that we're, we are one, like, right? No Webster, no U City, no Kirkwood, we just one big family.
We don't discuss the bell and anything-
We don't discuss the bell. No, they may talk about basketball.
But no, I know that there have been like relationships built from students that have gone beyond that trip, so that, that's powerful. Also, just happy to hear, I think everybody shares that sentiment about the grade level, like knowing who the students are and giving that targeted help for them. And then I did have a question around students who may not be on the college pathway, like what are some of the things, like for post-secondary experiences or things that students have or choices or that they're exposed to that may not want to attend college?
We're trying to continue to do a better job and put some in, in our presentations to our, our parents, you know, trying to talk more about South Tech, and maybe what options might be there for students, and really trying to put some of this out in front of them. Again, as it relates to the Success Ready Student Network, are there opportunities where we can get students outside of our building into some of these places? And so we have a lot of progress to be made in that area, but we have, we have the flexibility in our schedule to do it. And so we're able to, with some of our students, we're able to, to try to see if they have current work experience, if not, trying to connect them. Some of our, our students that do, we have a career management course that they can take, but also that's kind of coupled with a job that they may have outside, and so that helps them kind of get back on that track for graduation. I, I think the biggest thing is that we've just got to try to connect our students with businesses and, and see what their passion is. And, and some conversations we have, unfortunately, you'll still see some students that they're not sure what their career is yet. So that's step one, is like, and even, I remember last year, we, we sat down with a senior, and they just weren't a hundred percent sure, and trying to sit down and have those conversations. One particular student that's graduating early, her goal is to own her own boutique shop. And so like, that's, she had a game plan for what that looks like, and we tried to encourage her and give her some advice, say, "You need to focus here, focus there," and they've got it all figured out, understanding what the financial piece might look like, and the steps that she's going to have to make. And she actually set goals that like in year, year one, this is where I want to be, and then year two, this is where I want to be. Year two, I think she was already wanting to have people that she hired on. And I said, "You're working at a fast pace." But, but that, like, but for her to be thinking, like, "I, I've got to, I want to make connections, and now I'm renting my own space, and then I get to a point that I, that I'm able to bring," I think they said, "at least one other person on, that that's one of my employees." And so I, I think the biggest thing is just trying to educate them on what the possibilities are. Because anymore, the game's changed quite a bit. Most young people, including my son, just think that somehow through either video games or social media, they're going to make a lot of money. And it doesn't like, it, it doesn't necessarily work that way. But what they're seeing is just how other people have become successful, because they've kind of marketed themselves, or they've branded themselves, and that has become popular. And so just trying to expose them to other opportunities out there is just some of the conversations. And I don't know if anybody else has anything to add, but those are kind of the things that we, that are touched on in the problem-solving meetings, is what does a student want to do? Like, it's more so than, let's just get them graduated, like, but what are they going to do once they graduate?
Specifically, for our Missouri Option students, like, part of the process, we have an exit form. So our students who are graduating through Missouri Option, we make sure they visit our college and career counselor, and then they sit down with Ms. Thomas, who was our alternative high school counselor, and they talk specifically what's next. Because our Missouri Option students are graduating, not all in May, right? Three of our students are already gone. So we talk with them about what's next, and more than likely, some of those students will go to the St. Louis Community College, or they continue to work in the business that they are already working in, some of their families have businesses. So just, I could speak directly to the parent pathways, Missouri Option students, we do work with them in regards to what's next, because I could have a student graduate next week. So we need to have a plan for that student if they leave us next week.
Thank you for that, that observation and that question, Ms. Shurn. And I'm looking, I looked at my team, and I was looking at, at Dr. Harold, because I think I know exactly who that student is, because she's on my student, Super N student advisory committee group. And we, well, as I said, we, we celebrated, we celebrated her actually in our last meeting in December, and as, as we were talking to her, she promised me that she was coming back for the graduation, so I'd be able to shake her hand when she comes across the stage. But I'm bringing it up specifically because we've heard from that group, and earlier I was talking with the board related to something else, we talked about the way that we've incorporated student voice. One of the things we heard from that group, and, and my team attends those meetings as well, is exactly what, what you have identified. We, we heard from students that says, "All we hear about is college." And, and I, I just want to commend Dr. Harold and his team for hearing that, because we share that feedback with administration. And so I do know that that's on their radar. I do know that that's one of the reasons that we are so enthusiastic about the Success Ready Student Network, because it does incorporate those things. So excited to hear something very specific about a student that, that we have a, a very close connection to through our work with the student advisory committee. Thank you, Dr. Harold.
Yeah, thank you, guys, for this. It's been very, I guess, eye-opening to hear what's going on at the high school. It's really good, and you guys are setting the example of what it means to be a pioneer,